Testing.
Okay, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a, an approval, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. GIS property casualty. Gentlemen, you'd like to come up front? Thank you. How was your mornings?
Fantastic, wonderful. Thank you.
Long time no see.
Yeah.
You start whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. This morning, Matt Weber, General Insurance.
Charlie Keane, General Insurance Services.
And as stated, we're here seeking formal approval for the 2024-2025 Property and Casualty Insurance Program Renewal, as well as the General Insurance Services Consulting Agreement. Overall, as we went into further detail. Certainly. As we discussed in further detail, you know, with this board, it represents below 3% rate increase overall, which is below the standing agreement with Travelers Insurance that has the bulk of the program and well below market averages for municipalities. This is a testament to the county's performance over the years, commitment to safety, risk management, keeping people, you know, safe and healthy. So, we worked hard. It's a collective effort, you know, with this board, various department heads. So, a big thank you to everyone involved, not just for the renewal, but throughout the year to make sure we keep things accurate. So, we're happy to bring forward these terms and thanks for the continued efforts, partnership, and open to any questions.
Board have any questions?
I think the hidden, the hidden jewel of the renewal was that travelers, we pursuant to some of the negotiation that had occurred a few years past, were capped at a 3% rate increase. So, they could have gone to three and even though that was available to them and that was kind of their stop, we didn't have that much of an increase. I think the, when you put those numbers in order, you're about 2.5% increase. So, our departments, some to me unnamed, I've done a very well, a very good job of protecting all of our property and systems. And so, I think the renewal, given the atmosphere for other like-kind organizations or municipalities is quite impressive on the renewal. So, total, I believe we added, was it 8 or 9% of value between the value of buildings and things like payroll and raises and things like that, and we're still under a 3% overall premium increase, and that's substantially below. So, I think it's, it shows the commissioners, department heads are doing everything they can to keep those, whether it's work comp or building and casualty, things are going in the right direction.
I move that we approve the Risk Management and Insurance Brokerage Service Agreement with GAS for our property and casualty renewal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Highway Department, open and award 2024 Build by Tumulus bids.
Good morning.
Morning Jim.
There were seven bids received by the Auditor's Office.
Life is good.
Can you pull that microphone closer? Can you pull that microphone closer?
Is that good?
Pull closer.
All right, the first is from Central Paving. There's multiple bids.
There's multiple, yeah, so you're not really going to be able to read through them.
We have one from Central Paving. Milestone Contractors North LLC.
How much time are you on it? Need to go over these?
I can go over them during the meeting and I'll come back.
Come back with a recommendation.
Yeah.
Reeve Riley. The Klink Group. Pavement Solutions Inc. Asphalt Materials Inc. Pavement Solutions Inc. Believe that's all the bids.
Okay.
Can you go back?
Yeah, I'll go back and then come up with recommendations at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list here, we have a proclamation recognizing the Porter County jailers and the court security as first responders. Do we have a copy of that proclamation? You want to read that?
Sure. Porter County, Indiana. Proclamation recognizing as Indiana first responders, court security and correction officers and jailers. Whereas, the state of Indiana has recognized pursuant to IC 10-10-5-2-1 correctional officers and jailers and court security as Indiana first responders. And whereas emergencies occur at any time, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, that require Indiana first responders to act with courage to keep all of us, the general public, safe and protected. And whereas, Porter County correctional officers and jailers are tasked with protecting the community from those accused and convicted of crimes in our county. And whereas, the Porter County Court Security protect the judicial officers, staff and public from those accused and convicted of crimes in our county. And therefore, be it result, the Porter County Board of Commissioners hereby officially recognize the Porter County Court Security and the Porter County Correctional Officers and Jailers as Indiana first responders.
And Sheriff Fallon, I talked to you briefly because these were jailers and these were court security. But could you briefly explain, you know, why it's important that we designate them as first responders?
Absolutely. Is this on?
Yes.
Yeah, it should be.
First off, I'd like to thank the commissioners for that proclamation. I think that's a very important and strong message, and strong message that you've relayed to the men and women who wear the sheriff's office uniforms and protect the courts and all the other buildings, so, in the jails. So, thank you very much. Why that's important is because, two examples. Number one, spelled out through statute with the jail and corrections. They're dealing with the worst of the worst of Porter County. And they're subjected to a hostile environment. Let's just say that, at the least. And so, it's important they're relaxed. As far as court security and jail officers like are here today with donning the uniform, carrying a gun, court security responds, they're tasked with keeping the judges, the jurors and all the other office staff that are in our courthouses and our buildings on a regular basis. And in the event we have an active shooter at a court or in a building here, they're the ones that are responding as well to help save lives. So, that's why I think that this is very important. It's a monumental step and thank you.
And I should, we should also add that if we did experience a major event in our county, it's all hands on deck.
Absolutely.
It'd be called it.
Absolutely. You know, jail officers, court security, they work, the security at the fair. You know, they, when they're that uniform, they have arrest powers. I could call them and activate them in a state of emergency at any time.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the proclamation recognizing the Porter County jailers and court security as first responders.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. The commissioners are going to keep accepting applications for the West Porter Township Fire Protection District Board. The new deadline will be April 18th at 4:30 PM. That was by my recommendation as board president. And the reason that I had recommended that is that I believe that we need to, we need to attract applicants that have some type of background, that have some knowledge and experience dealing with taxes here in our, in our state or our county and that have a clear understanding of, you know, the tax system. So, I think, looking at, looking at our board, you know, as a whole there at the West Porter Fire District, I think there's, there's plenty of, I think all of our board members have a deep understanding of fire services. So, we need to get a little bit more experience, especially in this, this particular case because if we, if they are to eventually go to the territory, it's, the residents down there need to understand clearly what that means to them as far as their taxes and what they're going to end up paying. And I personally just feel more comfortable having, having a board member that had more of a, more of that type of background than a fire background, so.
Before we move off of that, I'd like to recommend that for this appointment and all of our future board appointments, we make the appointments contingent on the candidate passing a background check.
I like that.
I like that too.
Okay. Let's, let's do that in a motion to make a policy.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to require background checks for all board appointments moving forward from this date. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Okay, we have a revision to Resolution 13-04 Convention Recreation and Visitors Commission.
We found that in our current resolution that was passed in 2013, that it had a party affiliation requirement, which is no longer part of the state statute. And as such, we were not in compliance with the resolution, but we were in compliance with the state statute. And this is just taking out the party affiliation requiring, requirement in the resolution.
Scott, do you have any?
No other changes besides the party affiliation to bring this into compliance with the state statute.
Okay. Now, I, I have, you know, given the circumstances, the recent circumstances of going ons with the tourism board, you know, it has, it has been brought to my attention, it's my feeling. I think that we need to take a hard look at that board and how it's currently structured. I think it's, I think you can make a strong case, given what has happened here recently, that is flawed and that we need to make decisions up here that affect the size of that board and to make it more, more accountable and surely more, you know, a better working relationship with the appointing bodies up here, whether that's the Porter County Board of Commissioners or the county council. So, we'll be working toward that end here over the summer. So, just wanted to announce that.
I move that we approve the revision to Resolution 13-04 Convention Recreation and Visitor Commission.
Do you have a second?
No.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye. And my opposition is because I think we should always strive towards party balance.
Can we just, just have a conversation about that? We did not have party balance, so I...
Which I wasn't aware of.
Yeah.
I think to fix that, we should have tried to get party balance rather than do away with it. That's just my opinion.
And Scott, I know can chime in too. The issue is, after we make our appointments, we have no control over the subsequent bodies that are making appointments and what party affiliation that they are selecting. So, because we have cities and towns and we have other, and the council. So, when we made our appointment in January, the subsequent appointments past ours got us out of balance. And it's, I don't know how we could try to keep that in balances. And I agree with you Laura, I wish there were a way that we could have balance on that board. I just don't know how we could, how we can enforce that. And maybe Scott can jump in on this as well.
Well, if we're going to look at the, take a hard look at the resolution, I think that's something that can be part of taking a look at it to see if there's going to be any changes to the enabling resolution that, if there's a way that we could deal with the party balance a little bit more objectively among the appointing authorities. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, my, my understanding right now is that there's, it's heavily Democrat as opposed to Republican.
I don't think it should be heavily either party.
Yeah, I know, I understand Laura. Here's my, and I think that if you look at the latest issue that has developed over there with, that has resulted in $250,000, $225,000 of the taxpayers' money walking out the door with a former employee. I don't think politics should have anything to do with any of these, any of these appointments. That should not be a criteria. It should be, should be based on that person's, you know, background and ability to carry out those responsibilities. And I, I fail to see where their political affiliation has anything to do with that. So, but that's one of the things we're going to...
Yeah, we'll, we'll absolutely take a look at it. And I, and I know that it would have to be up to the commissioners then to figure out, we'd have to have enough appointments in, in the staggered years such that we could balance it out. And so, that would be one thing that we'd have to look at because we can't control who the council appoints. And so, the first appointment that put us out of balance was the council appointment. The second appointment was the Couts Hebron appointment that put us out of balance. And we can't just tell them who their appointment needs to be. So, I think we need to figure out a way that the commissioners then would be responsible for bringing it in balance.
Well, you know, and I know that I'm not the only one feels this way, that I, I think that, you know, it, all these appointments and that board need to be brought into the 21st century of how things are to be, you know, should be done at this point. And I think that, you know, given the amount of money that that, they collect over the course of the year and how that money is spent, I personally think the council's appointment should be a council, a member of the Porter County Council itself. So, there's more, there's more accountability there as to how the money's being spent. Because right now, our, much of what they're doing over there is not, is not being run through our county auditor's office or our HR department. And that is what's caused, I can make a strong argument, that is what's caused a big part of this problem. So, but we're, we're going to, you know, we're going to address it, we're going, we're going to fix it. So, anyway, anybody else? Thank you. Skilman, project updates.
Wait, one more.
Oh, whoa, 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 I'm sorry. I apologize. Amended ARPA ordinance, first reading.
So, the proposed sixth amendment would be that the Willow Creek Drainage Project would be removed from the failed stormwater management systems projects. The reason for that is there's been another location for those funds for that project to continue on. The other three projects then would, the other three projects would absorb the Willow Creek money as those things have gotten closer to being bid with projections. So, one change here is to remove the Willow Creek Drainage Project. To be clear, the Willow Creek Drainage Project still has funds available from the original bond issued to be completed. So, that Willow Creek Drainage Project still is viable with funding. This just produces an extra, I believe, of $930,000 to the other three projects that were underway. The second change would be an addition of unallocated ARP money right now of $101,292. That would be to facilities for the rooftop unit needed at the courthouse and the JDC cooling tower. And then last but not least would be an additional of $32,480 to the already appropriated Marquette Trail sum. Again, as that projects are starting to become more clear, as with engineers' estimates, staff believes that's the additional money needed to finish one stage of the Marquette Trail. So, ultimately, we are allocating an additional roughly $133,000 of the money remaining in ARP, which I think we started the meeting at around 300 or 350.
354.
That was unallocated. So, this would be about another 133,000 towards, to come off that 350,000 that wasn't already, that was not yet appropriated. That would be the sixth amendment to the ARP ordinance.
Okay, so if you weren't thoroughly confused, you are now. So, I'm not sure what we're, we're going to close the commissioners' meeting. We're going to open up the, the public meeting, but I want to make sure the public understands what we're actually considering here, supporting or not supporting. And that was, that was a lot of information.
Well, let me try to make it simpler. Two new additions of money that had not yet been appropriated. That would be to the facilities department for the rooftop cooling unit, or HVAC unit at the courthouse and the JDC cooling tower for $101,292. The other was an additional of money that had not been previously allocated to the Marquette Trail project.
That was phase five and six, correct?
Yeah, and that's 32,480. The last, which sounds more complicated, is there was four, four stormwater systems that was approved through the ARP process. We would, this, this sixth amendment would remove the Willow Creek Drainage Project, taking us down to three projects. Those three projects would absorb or are in need of absorbing the $930,000 that was internally allocated to the Willow Creek Drainage Project. Those other three projects would have that money pro-rated out to them to be able to complete them. The Willow Creek Project would not have money in ARP. However, the Willow Creek Drainage Project does have money earmarked within the original bond that was done in the stormwater department. So, the Willow Creek Project would still occur.
Okay. I'm going to close the commissioners' meeting and open up the public meeting. And I will call for three times each for those who would like to speak in favor of the ordinance or those who would like to speak not in favor of the ordinance. I'll, I'll start with, anyone like to speak in favor of this ordinance? First call. Second call, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, is there anyone that like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone like to speak, first call, anyone would like to speak against this ordinance? Or not in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anyone who would like to speak against this ordinance or not in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, anyone like to speak against this ordinance or not in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call. Okay, I'll close the public meeting, open back up the commissioners' meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the amended ARPA ordinance on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We'll have the second reading at our, what's the date?
April 23rd.
April 23rd meeting. Thank you. Skilman, project update. Thank you, gentlemen. How are you all today?
Well, how are you?
Good.
Good morning.
We'll start with the Highway Department, if we could.
Wait, you didn't do that at the top?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was at the top. Memorial Opera House, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner. Scotty Rogers, our project man, on vacation. So, I'll do my best to update you on what's happening. As far as the project, we have all three bids, packages received, which means we have all the contractors on board. I believe there's some action we have with the third bid package following. But during this time, we always anticipated starting in May after a May show to really get going. So, leading up to that, primarily we're expediting shop drawings and material procurement to be able to hit the ground running. Probably the most important thing is to start vacating some of the areas we're going to be working in and we're assisting in any way we can with that. So, really, a lot of the work is happening behind the scenes, procuring the material, getting things approved so that, again, work can go full steam once we're cleared out and the last show. And if it's still in May, I'm not sure, but...
Either a week.
Yeah. So, that's what we're anticipating. But either way, we're ready, we're in a good position to get going on that.
Scott, do we need to do anything with the bid pack? Do we have to? Okay, you're just, all right. I don't know if we needed to vote on those at all.
I mean, on the second agenda item, is that what you're asking? We got to approve bid package number three of the project today. Yes.
Right. I believe the, correct me if I'm wrong, the bids for bid package three were approved. Is this for the contract that we're asking for? Yes. So, bid package three, as we know, is the last phase of the, the last bidding phase of the project that primarily included all the finishes. Bids came in successful and they were prior approved. So, we're now asking you to sign or award the contracts to the following.
So, we've approved all these awards in a previous meeting, all the way down to seven?
No, five, six and seven are pay application.
Okay. So, we can do two, three and four in one motion since we've approved it. We've already approved them being awarded the contract. This is them coming back with the contract to be signed.
Okay.
I move that we approve the contractors for bid package number three for painting, casework, woodwork and flooring. I don't have the total amount, but I move that we approve those contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Then items five, six and seven are for pay application number one for Circle R Mechanical in the amount of $4,512.50. If you'd like, I could read all three or...
We could do all three in one.
Right. And again, these pay applications, number one... Right. And again, these pay applications, number one, are primarily procuring the material in the mobilization phase, so it's not for, necessarily for construction in place. That's why they're not very high. Item number six was the mechanical concepts pap, number one, the amount of $16,150. And EMCOR higher electric for the electrical work in the amount of $13,669.74. I ask that you allow us to process those paps.
I move that we approve the pay apps for plumbing, mechanical, and electrical work for the Memorial Opera House renovation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Paul.
Morning.
Morning. Highway Department?
Yes. So for the highway department, as far as the project update goes, I've included a preliminary milestone schedule to the agenda here as we're going through the design phase. We're expected to receive our final design drawings here on April 19th. From there, we'll move to our final estimate, and we're hoping to advertise for bids on May 14th at the commissioners' meeting. Our bid date is scheduled for June 18th right now, preliminary, and we hope to issue a notice to proceed on July 16th. Everything's moving in the right direction. We're working with the highway department and architects and engineers, BZA zoning. So we're moving in the right direction here, no hiccups.
Yes, and I really appreciate that. I'm getting that information sent back to me as well, that everything's moving right along. I actually, I was talking to a commissioner out in Hendricks County last week, and they're in about the same stage as we are. They're building a new highway garage. Theirs is 27 million. And, but it's interesting to hear about the same type of issues that they have to work around, you know, which is. But I'm proud of the, proud of the work that the highway department has done on this, because I know it's been, it's been a struggle at times because of, you know, the inflated cost of everything to get it where we need it. So, appreciate the hard work you guys are putting in on this.
Thank you.
This project. Jail?
As for the jail, we have two different bid packages here for the jail. First would be project number one, which I've included the preliminary milestone here. This is gonna be the exterior work of the jail. This would be the re-roof, any coping, standing seam roof, any of the exterior work that we want to move forward as far as bid package one. That would, some of the dates here kind of fall into scope with the highway department, but as far as design goes, we're hoping to get final design drawings from DLZ on May 3rd, completing a final design estimate by May 10th, advertise for bid on the 14th as well, and then have the bids submitted on June 16th with a notice to proceed for the project number one on July 16th.
Okay.
And this would be for all the exterior work.
And things, I assume, are moving right along there as well?
Yes. So we are working with the commissioners and the jail staff, working through some, some things for project number two on mechanical plumbing and all the MEPs that we can move forward on design there. It'll be coming out later this year, but at least DLZ can move forward on design there, but no hiccups. Everything's moving in the right direction right now, and we hope to, hope to meet these preliminary milestones.
All righty. Well, thank you. The board have any questions?
No.
We've got one more item here.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yep, no problem. Item number three is for approval for EC Bebilla Roofing to do roofing cores in the amount of 100, sorry, $1,210. These roofing cores would provide DLZ some inside information as far as insulation depth and drainage slopes, et cetera, for the roof design for project number one.
Yeah, where they drill into the roof itself?
Yes, so we've got.
Type of materials on it?
Exactly. We've got 12 roof cores that we're gonna do in different locations on top of the roof. It's about a two-inch wide drill is basically, that goes down, they'll pull out a slot, basically showing what the material is, what the depth is, if there's any underlayment, et cetera.
They're patched at when you're done?
Yes, it's patched.
Questions by the board? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we need to approve this, or?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we approve the roof core sampling with EC Bebilla for $1,210.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Sheriff's Residence, approval to pay for the asbestos invoice in the amount of $9,500 out of the Historic Preservation Fund?
When was this work completed?
I think that was in February. February. The total amount is a little over 11,000, but we were hoping to help offset that cost and pull the money from the Historic Preservation Fund. We've got three buildings, the Memorial Opera House, the courthouse, and the sheriff's residence, and was hoping that we could pull the money out of there to help support Joe's budget for that item.
So this solves the problem, hopefully.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything left in there that could be asbestos.
I agree.
Where was the asbestos located? Was it on the wall?
No, it was in the basement, it was on the wall, and it was on some of the, some of the equipment.
They found it after they did the mold remediation.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve $9,500 of the Historic Preservation Fund to go towards covering the asbestos invoice for the sheriff's residence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Facilities, Joseph.
Good morning.
Sheriff's Residence update.
Yes, so as you know, this project was approved and was to prepare the former old museum, old sheriff's residence, the main floor for occupancy by a retail tenant. The county commissioners approved at their last meeting the lease agreement, and we are moving forward since that time to get the building basically just up to, you know, a habitable environment. So the project officially did start that week. We made significant progress in the last two weeks. We anticipate completion by May 1st, notwithstanding any third-party vendor material delays. So far, we haven't had any, which is good. We'll be updating our electrical service to 200 amp. This'll take about two weeks to get completed. They are initially starting their work on that right now. The HVAC is currently being installed. We anticipate that being completed sometime maybe next week. NIPSCO will then install a new meter and service to the building pending the city's inspection on that. Other work that our staff has completed included various repairs and installation recommended by the city building department. We still have several items on our list, but we don't anticipate any problems with that. We're also going to be sealing up the windows in the old jail section with some plexiglass and insulation to kind of help maintain our temperatures in the back area of that. We do anticipate that we'll be below our estimated cost on the project and allowing the tenant to have full access to the building on May 1st. Any questions on that?
Do you just want to talk about the state of the windows that were in the old jail and how that affected our NIPSCO bill?
Yeah, so basically, the windows that were there weren't there. So their glass is missing, they were kind of broken open. So they were just in a really bad state. So we're gonna work on those getting sealed up so that way, I mean, you literally can't open them anyway because there's bars in the window. But we're gonna seal those up with a tinted plexiglass material, so that way it kind of helps, you know, keep that a little darker, but it also kind of reflects the light, but it also will be insulated behind it. So you won't see the insulation, but it'll be there. So it'll help keep the heat in the building instead of, you know, helping the birds. So it'll be a nice little improvement that they're gonna have down there.
Okay. Any other questions by the board? Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Sheriff Ballin, North Shore Health Centers, Inc., a two-year addendum of agreement for services. Thank you, sir. Just quickly explain what this is.
So usually, we do an annual contract, but they, we've been talking to them, there's no pay increases, anything set like that for at least two years. So to simplify things, we wanted to go to a two-year contract instead of an annual.
Does this need a, Scott, does this need a approval?
Yes.
Of vote?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the agreement for services with North Shore Health Centers for two years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. E-911, Debbie Gunn, director, Motorola Change Order Number Three for a Nimble Storage Server Upgrade Configuration with a new completion date of June 24. The original amount of change order was $36,229. We had a carry-forward credit from change order number two of $10,659.81, which leaves us a difference of $25,569.91. Explain to us the Reader's Digest version of this.
With the equipment that we're leasing currently, we have a 10-year lease, we have 11 terabytes of storage. And data conversion for over 20 years of data from our current Tiburon system is proving to be a huge amount of storage. So although we have enough with our current hardware, by Motorola's estimations, in years three and four after going live potentially, we could see us reach capacity of our current hardware. What that could potentially cause is system slowdown, but even worse, we could have it crash. So this is a proactive measure. The cost is lower at this point to, if we purchase this hardware. Waiting on it obviously would necessitate updates that, you know, at what point do we decide that we're going to, to do this if not now? Because I think it's inevitable.
Now, it's just, is these, the cost difference here, or the costs associated to this, do you have it in your budget or is this gonna be a?
I'm going to need additional, additional appropriation, yes.
I just want, we just want to be clear. Well, I think it's, you know, the problem speaks for itself. We can't ignore it, and so it has to be done. And it's, you know, it's just, has to be done, so. I'll entertain a motion.
Can I ask a question before we proceed? Did you, I assume you all, this update was made here, but did you obtain the breakdown of cost for municipalities? That I?
I looked at it briefly, yes.
My question would be, is this something that we would, aside from, so everyone knows on the board, I did communicate with all the heads of, well, the chiefs or also Sheriff Ballin regarding the potential cost per agency and municipalities. I also communicated with the fire chiefs involved as well, so they weren't blindsided with this. My question would be, to proceed with this, if approved today, what would be the next steps in notifying the municipalities? There's a $3,000 cost for Portage, Valpo has a 2,500, Chesterton has a roughly 1,600, and Porter is around 575. So I guess I'm kind of unsure how to proceed.
How to notify them of their obligation?
Yes, and my concern with that being, if approved today, and then obviously their boards would need to approve this as well, I may be borrowing trouble here, but how do we proceed if there is a municipality out there that says, no, we can't do this now? Maybe we want to budget for this in 2025. I would, I don't want it to stall progress.
Well, let's be, let's be clear, there's a change here, not because of a mistake made on the county's end. This is just the price of admission at this time, you know, for this.
Debbie, I do have a question for you, because it says the original completion date was January 31st of 2022, and so now the new completion date is June of 2024. So this system has not been turned on yet, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
But we don't have any, the agreement that we have, or the MOUs that we have with the other, with Portage, Valpo, and Chesterton and Porter have dollar amounts assigned.
Right, right.
So this would be in addition to the agreement we already have.
Right, right.
So I think her question is well, is well taken.
Yeah.
If we're going to approve this today, my suggestion would be it's approved, not only contingent upon the council appropriating the money, but also we need to think about something with those city councils so that we have, and I understand you've told the police chiefs and the fire chiefs and those type of situations, but that doesn't always mean it got back to the fiscal bodies. But just to be clear, we don't, what Commissioner Biggs stated is true, this is part of the price of getting this done. This isn't a mistake or anything along those lines. And it's, it's not, in the grand scheme of what this costs, this is not a large amount of money on this project. The county is taking roughly 70% of the total cost based upon our usage. So I don't see any problems with this. These numbers aren't that large. But when we put the fine point on it, I know how sometimes we react if other boards make decisions for us. So this may be something that it's contingent upon Portage, Valpo, and Chesterton and Porter at least acknowledging and moving forward.
Have they already kicked in for their portion of this system? Because the new contract price is 2.655 million dollars.
Yeah, that's part of the issue. They've already, they've already.
They've, I've already agreed to that.
Right.
They've already proratted that out.
So you're aware how it's broken right now. This, this recommendation was from Motorola that there be a purchase order and this cost be paid outright to explain to you as well as the public, change order number two left us with a credit because we had some interface changes. And I spoke with, you know, our, our project manager with Motorola and said it didn't make sense to carry forward a credit when you're also gonna be charging this purchase order, and so that's where this adjustment comes in. So moving forward, barring no other, further change orders, this should carry us through and allow us to maintain the current lease term agreement that we have, all the municipalities. The, the alternative to that was lumping this in and then recreating and reworking the numbers associated with that lease term agreement upon system acceptance afterwards, and that, that was an option that Motorola was not fond of. That's why this is presented this way. But to answer your question, the 10-year lease agreement, those numbers and those percentages were based on population, if I understand correctly, is that, is that correct? And that's how I associated these percentages with these costs. And those, all of these entities are currently paying in yearly for that lease agreement at a static number established at that point, yeah. And that, now the, now the, so everyone's aware, the maintenance costs will begin once we flip the switch and we go live, and the maintenance costs do come yearly with a, with a percentage increase, but it's minimal. But the lease term agreements for the equipment itself are static and unchanged.
Well, you know, to help expedite this, because I think it would be somewhat confusing if I sit on the Chesterton town council and receives a letter from you asking me to pay, I think the letter needs to come from us, the board of commissioners. So if, if, if I may ask, Scott, if you would work with Debbie and you're getting him the information he needs to write a formal letter, and it'll get in front of us, and we'll sign it, well, we'll approve it today, but we'll, we'll, we'll get it signed and get it mailed out. But it'll come from our office, okay?
Okay, thank you.
But we'll still need a motion for approval.
I move that we approve Motorola Change Order Number Three for a Nimble Storage Server Upgrade with a new completion date of June 2024 for a total amount of $25,569.19 pending approval from the council and from the municipalities that will be having a, having a portion of this assigned to them.
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second for approval as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you. And if I could just take a moment and ask you, not next week, but the following week, April 15th, is National Telecommunicator? And if I could just take a moment and ask you, not next week, but the following week, April fifteenth, is National Telecommunicator Week. I invite all of you to the center. If you have time during that week to come visit the dispatchers, it's a really.
Will there be free food?
Absolutely. There's always food, Telecommunicator Week, and you're welcome to join us.
All right. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Clerk Jessica Bailey, or I see Sunday back there. We have an ordinance for the twenty-twenty-three Hova, Hova.
Hava.
Hava grant and first, first reading.
Yes.
This is.
We received a grant of twenty-seven thousand dollars from the Secretary of State's Office from the Help America Vote Funds. So, we just have to, I guess, create somewhere to put the money so that we can spend it. We're going to be buying the rest of the tab, we bought half the tablets last year for the vote center locations. The judges use those to report wait times to the public through the app of, you know, how long the wait line is at each vote center location. They use it, they'll have, that will be used to make videos on how to use the machines, you know, how to vote, things like that. Those will be on those tablets as well. And we're also doing a sticker promotion for all fifth-grade classes in Porter County. We sent packets out to them, and the fifth graders are going to create our next I Voted sticker. And then we're going to vote on it on the fair, on our machines for the public, and then that will be the sticker for our November election.
How much is the grant?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Entertain a motion? Away, I got a, okay, first reading, okay. I'm going to, as we did earlier, I'm going to close the Commissioners' meeting and open up the public meeting. Is there anyone would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? First call. Second call, does anyone like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak against this ordinance? First call. Second call, is there anyone like to speak against this ordinance? Third and final call, is there anyone like to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll close the public meeting, open back the Commissioners' meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund eighty-nine-twenty for the Hava Grant for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three election supplies grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Okay, so this means we can spend it now?
No, not until after second reading.
And it's going to need to be appropriated by the council.
Okay.
Funds created.
Sorry, go ahead.
When are you guys, like, when is your next meeting to do the second reading, I guess?
Twenty-third.
Huh?
Our third.
Third, of this month?
Our fun.
Okay, perfect.
Our fund creation should not be slowing down the process that you have to do with the council to get it appropriated. You don't have to wait for that second reading to start that process.
Oh, perfect, okay. That's perfect, that's what, just want to make sure we could get the tablets before the election.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Recycling and Waste Reduction, Carrie Barron, Mars, Director. A request for recycling district to host the tire collection event on Saturday, May fourth, and Saturday, October twelfth, at the Porter County Expo Center. Real quickly, could you tell us what that, what that event is?
Sure, of course. This coincides with our household hazardous waste. Twenty-twenty-three I D M now requires all solid waste districts to seek approval from the landowner of where the tire collections are being held at. As we all know, just drive through the streets of Indiana and tires are disposed everywhere. So, this statement, this is just a notice to the state saying we're hosting our tire collection on these two dates. We have permission from the landowner and who we are contracted with, who will haul away the tires, so.
Okay, and we've done this for mid-years now.
The tire collection, yes. Actually, the state of Indiana turned to the solid waste districts seeking our input and our guidance because we've collected and properly disposed of these events for years. It's just this is a new form that just started, or a new document that started last year.
Okay, all righty. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the request for the recycling district to host the tire collection event on Saturday, May fourth, and Saturday, October twelfth, at the Porter County Expo Center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval as read. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Perfect, thank you. And also, April twentieth is our large Earth Day event. Hope to see everybody there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Highway Department, Jim Polarek, Summer Work Hours.
Back again.
Back again.
Okay. What we'd like to recommend is that, you know, as you're aware, we work four-ten's in the summer, Monday through Thursday. We would like to have a skeleton crew, just a handful of people, come in on Fridays. They would then be off on Mondays. So, that would, you know, increase our response time if we get a call from dispatch or whatever, and plus it would end up saving us on overtime of having to call somebody out.
And that's, that's the change, that's the difference between what you're doing last summer and somebody for that.
Correct, up to this.
Skeleton crew on Friday.
Right, up to this time, everybody's worked Monday through Thursday. So, like I said, we would have a handful of people work on Fridays, and then in turn, they would be off on Monday. So, they would still be working four-ten, it would just be off Friday instead of.
I think that's a great idea.
So.
We have to vote on this, though, do we?
Yeah, I think it, I think we do have to vote on it. Do we have to? Yeah, so I thought.
Okay. I move that we approve the summer work hours for the Highway Department to allow for a second skeleton crew to work Tuesday through Friday, ten-hour days.
Second.
We have a motion for, and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Okay, went through the bids. For liquid bituminous, for delivered material, asphalt materials was lowest bidder on that. And, and in regards to pickup material, asphalt materials was also lowest bidder, but I'd also like to have you approve Bitmat due to the fact that Bitmat has a terminal in South Bend. So, if we have to send a truck to pick something up, we can send it to South Bend compared to asphalt materials all the way down to Warsaw. So, if we have to run and get a partial load with our truck, it's obviously a lot quicker, and it would justify the few cents a gallon sending somebody to South Bend instead of Warsaw. Hot, the plant mix, Reeve Riley was the lowest bidder. There were a couple of things. Milestone was a little cheaper on in regards to some mobilization fall projects, like if we're fixing a road cut or things like that. It would, we'd have to run the numbers, but it may end up being a little cheaper to have Milestone come out and do that. So, I would recommend approval of all bidders on bituminous plant mix. And as far as crack seal, pavement solutions is the lowest possible bidder for crack seal. So, those are my recommendations on bituminous.
Okay. I would have preferred to have all that with numbers, but since you didn't have them, I'm not going to make your read-through that.
You want, I can if you want. I've got them.
I think, I think you probably should.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. For liquid bituminous, asphalt materials for the ninety, AE ninety is a dollar ninety a gallon. Bitmat was two-twenty a gallon. Ninety S, asphalt materials two-twenty-two a gallon, Bitmat two-fifty a gallon. Fog seal, asphalt materials one-seventy-two a gallon, Bitmat one-eighty-five a gallon. Dust lay, asphalt materials one-eighty-four a gallon, Bitmat one-ninety-five a gallon. Those are delivered prices. Pickup prices, asphalt materials for ninety, one-eighty-eight a gallon, Bitmat two-ten a gallon. Ninety S, asphalt materials two-twenty a gallon, Bitmat two-forty a gallon. Fog seal, asphalt materials one-seventy a gallon, Bitmat one-seventy-five a gallon. Dust lay, asphalt materials one-eighty-two a gallon, Bitmat one-eighty-five a gallon. As far as plant mix, bituminous plant mix, Reeve Riley for base material, seventy-three-twenty a ton, surface eighty-seventy a ton. That's in, that's delivered and in place by the vendor. Milestone base seventy-five-thirty a ton and eighty, fifty a ton depending on volume. Surface eighty-seven a ton.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the recommendations of our Highway Superintendent for the bituminous bids.
Second.
We have a recommenda, recommendation for approval and a second as read by the Highway Superintendent. That was all bituminous, wasn't it?
Correct, just different types of bituminous.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Development Stormwater Management, Mike Jabel.
I have a request for the advertisement of bids for the rehabilitation of Bridge ten-sixteen Midwest Steel Highway over US twelve and various railroad.
And that's just exactly what I'm asking for, is the request to go ahead and release these bid documents to the, for receiving bids. Oh, I haven't got the date right in front of me, but it'll be brought to you and opened at your, one of your next meetings.
Okay. And then we have ARPA funding modification for the Calumet Trail projects and various firm water projects?
I think Attorney McClure pretty much spelled all that out in his presentation, but I was prepared if you got any questions on that.
I don't have any questions, unless the board does. But before you, I'd like to introduce Mike as the county's new planning director, Porter County Planning Director. Mike accepted the job, I believe, last week.
Yes.
And welcome aboard. Known Mike for many, many years. I know he's very capable of it, and really look forward to working with you.
Likewise, thank you for the opportunity, Commissioners.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thanks. Central Midwest Regional Council of Carpenters, Sean McMurray. Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Fine. You got a request to use the northeast, northwest, and west triangle of the courthouse grounds on Wednesday, April seventeenth, from eight AM to three PM to hold the United Brotherhood of Carpenters Tax Fraud Days of Action, which is an annual nationwide campaign aimed at raising awareness about tax fraud issues across the United States. They will have two twelve-foot by three-foot banners, a video board with a microphone and speakers, which will play Valparaiso-based commercials. The system will be on a hitched trailer with a generator. There will be, also be four six-foot tables and two ten-by-ten, ten-foot tables. Where, where, where were you planning on parking that trailer?
I was hoping to do it on courthouse grounds. As far, you know what, I have a map here. It works a little bit better. But on the north side of the building, on the sidewalk outside of your restricted area was my goal.
Okay, well, in order, before I think the, the, the board proved that you need to speak with the facilities director, the weight of that, of that trailer is going to be important.
Okay.
Because that's, as you know, it's concrete.
Yes.
Want to get it cracked.
Yep, absolutely.
If the weight will tolerate it, I don't have a problem with it. But we, you need to deal with our facility director. It's the big guy in the back in the white shirt.
The only other thing here, in the past, we've had some problems with microphones during court. How do we solve that, Scott? Do you remember?
They, we have the petition, the requesting party comply with the city of Valpo's noise ordinance.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yeah, and we should, we should be compliant with the eight AM to three PM.
Okay. And if there was, that's why they got volume.
No problem at all. You, open communication for us.
During that time and.
Totally understandable. So, we don't expect it to be a rally or anything crazy. It's just a demonstration, lots of signs and flags, and people showing up to get free T-shirts and maybe some pizza. So, you guys are more than welcome.
Does it help if they position the speakers away from the courthouse so the sound goes out away from the courthouse?
And that's totally up to you guys. If you guys want it to face Lincoln Way, that's, that's fine, but we won't be a disruption as far as noise. We know that, I live here in Valpo, and I like eating radius outside, too. So, we're not going to disrupt anybody who doesn't want to hear from us.
Thank you.
I'm going to claim stupid here. Tax fraud. Who, I mean, who, I, we all oppose tax fraud, of course, but who are you targeting?
So, it's the construction industry for the most part. It's misclassified workers. It's workers that are paid for piecework, ten-ninety-nine when they work full-time for an employer, different, different things like that. But it is completely angled towards the construction industry. We're carpenters, not trying to get into anybody else's business.
Okay, where'd you wrestle at?
I was a three-time state champion at Portage, and then I wrestled at Michigan State University.
That's why your name sounded familiar. I'm glad you stuck around.
I love it here.
You look like you could still wrestle.
I can. It's useful when I keep my mouth shut, yeah.
All right. Entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the request from the Central Midwest Regional Council of Carpenters to use the courthouse grounds on Wednesday, April seventeenth, from eight AM to three PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your time.
Take care, buddy. Nicole Queer.
Hello.
There she is. We have a request to use the northeast and northwest corners of the courthouse grounds on Saturday, April twentieth, at one PM to, to thirty PM to hold a peaceful protest aimed at expressing opposition to war and advocating for peaceful solutions to conflicts. They will have chairs and possibly a megaphone or microphone.
Yeah, so, when I did the application, I don't know if there's going to be chairs, but there was no option to say neither, so.
Okay.
But there possibly will be a megaphone, microphone, but I will get the PA system, and it'll be quiet. It's for speeches.
Okay, I'm sure.
That is usually a safer day, no court.
Yeah, that's why I chose Saturday, because I didn't want to disturb anyone with us possibly being too loud or anything.
Are you with any organization or is it you?
It's just me, but I have helped, maybe I'm getting advice, but it's just, just me kind of organizing it.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, just, just try not to, this time of year, because the ground's real soft, tear up any grass.
Yeah, I don't expect it to be a lot of people. I mean, I love the cause, so I hope to have a lot of people. But yeah, I, if anyone does any damage or anything, I, I'm trying not to. I'm putting that on the flyer. Please respect everyone, so.
No, I think it's a great cause.
Thank you.
We don't have more of that in this world, but.
Yeah, it's, it's, I just wish for peace. So, yeah.
Bless you. Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the request to use the courthouse grounds on Saturday, April twentieth, from one to two-thirty PM for the request by Nicole Queer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other matter which may properly come before the Commissioners? Nobody? Yes, sir.
Or there.
Or there.
Sorry, I put some of my thoughts together, so they might be a little disorganized.
That's all right.
You can pick that up.
We hear disorganized, disorganized thoughts all the time up here.
Okay, forgive me for looking at my phone again. I had stuff in there that I was looking at, and I'll bounce around.
Please start out with your name.
Sure. My name's Rob Rablauer. I'm a member of the West Porter Fire District Board. So, it's a pleasure to see you as Commissioners in person. I haven't had that opportunity yet, so I'll make it as quick as possible. Couple of quick things. Disappointed that we weren't able to move the territory forward, given all the many years and hard work and the attempts. This is the closest anyone's ever gotten. I intend to keep moving forward with that. It's important. The residents of West Porter deserve high-quality fire and EMS responses in really quick response times. Unfortunately, they're not getting that right now. That's not the fault of the Fire Department. As you guys know, volunteerism is dying. And that's going to take its toll on our community. So, I know we, we want to get this done. We're going to keep working on it. Unfortunately, the way everything works, we have to wait until next year. But we can start now. We can start working with our partners. working with our partners that we had on this to try and move it forward. In regards to extending the application period for the open seat, I understand what you're doing, I, I appreciate wanting somebody with tax experience. I don't want to discount fire and EMS service experience. As you know, I'm a 24-plus-year fire service professional, I think that's why you picked me, right? We hire firms such as Sender Dalton to help with those tax questions and those problems. Your own posting on the website, and I'm gonna quote it so I don't get it wrong, um, doesn't say anything about tax experience, it says, "You're accepting application, West Porter Township Fire District, no political affiliation necessary, must be qualified by knowledge and experience in matters pertaining to fire protection and related activities in the district, and must be a resident of the West Porter Township District." So while I don't discount tax experience, we need people that understand what the Fire Department does. That's what's most important, that's what's paramount, and I know there's at least four very qualified candidates that submitted for that position, and I would throw my support behind any of the four of them. I appreciate the action you took with background checks, there's been some questions about people's backgrounds, we need to be of high moral character, since we are providing for the safety of the public and we're handling their tax dollars, so having a questionable background is a problem. I would encourage you to go a step further. And prevent appointments that appear to have a conflict of interest, specifically employees of the county, because that does give the appearance of impropriety, whether there is or not, it gives that appearance, and that conversation is out there amongst the West Porter residents. That's all I have, thank you for your time.
Well, Rob, since you brought it up, let's, uh, let, let's give the 900-pound gorilla in the room a name. You're talking about our Facilities Director, and it was our appointment, he's qualif- qualified as, as you just pointed out, is what the qualifications are required to sit on that board, and, um, the other thing I want to make clear is that he had that appointment before he had this job, okay? It, it, let's be, let's all be fair, and we have, we have an appointment on that board that voted in, in, differently than what Joe did in the last meeting, that is also, isn't he President of the HOA of, of Lakes of Four Seasons?
Yes, but that's not a county, that's not regulated by the county. Joe is regulated by the county, he's a county employee, and he's appointed to that board by the county commissioner. HOA is a private entity.
Well, okay, here, okay, okay, but here's, here's my point, if the county Commissioners, if they, if, if our purpose here was to put people on that board with these latest appointments to vote the territory down, why did we change, why did we change board members at all? Because that's where it was heading, you know it was heading there, before you were put on there, before Brad was put on there. So if the Commissioners, if, if their end game here was to make sure that that didn't pass, why did we change out board members?
It's a tough question to answer.
No, no, it's not a tough question to answer, Rob, it's, it's, we would not have.
Okay, well, in my initial meeting with Mr. Wazwadi, I voted him directly, I got marching orders from bigs to get this done, January 9th, the day they reappointed, said that to me. I spoke to you two weeks ago, you wanted to delay this, so I don't know what changed between January and October, but it's at the expense of our residents.
No, what, absolutely, and I told, and I told you that, and I told Brad that, I wanted the brakes touched down there with the decision. Of course, you and Brad did what you wanted to do, which was fine, that was fine, but what I've learned over the last few months is that there are just way too many of our residents on the Porter County side, in the unincorporated area, outside of the Lakes of Four Seasons, that weren't aware of this, and that didn't have the detail, that details that were, that a lot of the residents in the Lakes of Four Seasons had, or the Lake Counties, uh, Lake County side had, for whatever reason. And here's what I'm gonna say about that. We, we are elected officials, we have to answer to the, to the, to the taxpaying public. You don't have to do that as, as a, as a board appointment, but we do, okay? So if, if I detect that all, that information is not been, been disseminated out to the unincorporated area, that it's going to be affected, which is, what is, one-sixth of the territory, something like that?
Roughly, I believe.
Yeah. I, I, yes, then I said, whoa, 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 we gotta tap the brakes here, these people need to know. And that's, that's the reason I came away with the opinion that I did.
We did our due diligence, we posted in the paper, we followed per our attorneys, and everything was done properly. Unfortunately, you can't make people get involved, I mean, how big is Porter County, how many residents are there? How many people are sitting in this room?
Whoa.
And I work in government too, sir, I understand that, I look at the city council meetings in the town I work for, half, half, half dozen people, with a count of 26,000. So people chose to choose not to get involved, and, and you can't force them to. So we did our due diligence, we tried, we can't drag people out of their house kicking and screaming to a meeting to voice their opinion.
But we're.
At the same time, ignorance is not bliss, people have a duty to get out and learn about what's going on around them, they have a duty to learn about their politicians, they have a duty to understand who they vote for. Elections matter, votes matter.
Mm-hmm.
The people that put you here, their safety rides on your backs because you appoint us to figure out the Fire Department, right? Same as with the County Sheriff's Office, County Health Department, everything, you guys know this, so I'm just, I, I understand that you're beholden to the taxpayers, and rightfully so. I support that, I'm proud to hear that you guys feel that way, some politicians, I think, across our country don't feel that way, unfortunately, um, but I do still think it was at the expense of our residents. I do still think that we're gonna run into a point where the Fire Department might not be able to show up, or an ambulance might take 20 to 25 minutes to get there, four to six minutes in cardiac arrest until brain death occurs, fire doubles in size every minute.
Are you suggesting that, that the response times currently are so terrible that that's gonna happen, or could happen?
I'm suggesting that the response times are not guaranteed right now, because there's no guarantee.
Well, there's no.
Nobody's gonna show up, sir.
Rob.
We had staff, career personnel in the stations, that certainly minimizes that risk.
But Rob, you, you, nobody can guarantee the response times, nobody.
I understand that, there are, there are benchmarks, there are professional organizations of the C N F B A that create these benchmarks.
I, I get it.
Certain amount of time.
I get it.
That's why I have you people with a fire and EMS background versus a tax background is important, because they understand.
Oh, I, I understand your position, okay? I, I, I do, I think you're, you're, I think your heart's in the right place, but I want to see this done right, not quickly, and that's, and, and that's what we're gonna do here. I know that's not gonna, you know, I know that's not gonna set well with some people, I understand that, a lot of you have put a lot of time in this for a long time, I get it, but it's just been here recently that the Commissioners have felt, felt it necessary to inject ourselves into this to get things moving, to find out one way or the other, what's gonna be done down there, because I think a lot of people, even outside of this county, is going, is looking at that to see what happens, because you touched on it earlier, and you're right, the, running a volunteer fire department is not the future, it is, is, by the year, it's getting, it's getting more and more difficult, I get it, but we, whatever we end up doing down there, we want to do right, and I understand that people have a responsibility to vote for people, to this, but life, like, Rob, life is a little more complicated than that, I mean, we, we all have, we have jobs to go to, we have families to raise, you know, we have, you know, it just, and all the, all these outside, uh, things that influence you outside of your home, and, and as I told the Winfield Township trustee, that I thought it was the obligation of to, is, is to have everyone who is going to be in that territory mailed to, so they knew what was going on, and he said it wasn't, that wasn't realistic because of the cost. Now, I'm, I'm somewhat aware of what the costs would be, and a cost of 25 or 30, or $30,000 to mail out to all these residents, to let them know that quite possibly what you're currently paying for fire and ambulance services is going to jump eight times higher than it currently is? No, I don't think that's unreasonable, and nobody come to the consul, or to the Commissioners that said, hey, can you help us offset the cost of doing this? And I would have been your biggest cheerleader of helping, helping with that expense, but it has to be done. I'm just not going to allow, at least my seat, to encourage a decision down there where somebody opens up their mail at home and says, holy, I got an $800 bill here. Now, I know that's not gonna happen that way, but you see where I'm, I'm going, and I know it's a little bit heavier lifting, and it, and it slows things down, but it's necessary. That is the biggest problem that people have, and you know that, Rob, that, that their government doesn't, their government doesn't communicate with.
I, I understand. So let me ask this, and, and, and forgive me, because I'm not vultures of tax, uh, the taxes in general, but, uh, hey, man, I know that, I just got my bill the other day, that was one of my first day back in the case.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm paid by the taxpayers myself, I appreciate it, so, um, I was told that we lost our homestead exemption in Porter County last year, is that true?
No.
I, I, somebody, somebody recently told me this, and I noticed my tax bill.
Someone may have lost it, but, but residents did not. No, no.
So my point was gonna be, if that's the case, we didn't get a mailing on that, if that shoots a hole in that, I understand.
That would have been major.
Yeah, actually have.
So, but taxes went up, but they're still cheaper than.
Yeah, actually have extra, extra homestead credit in Porter County, part of our income tax goes towards an additional fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but Rob, please, we're gonna, we're gonna have to let you go here, but I want you to, here's what I want you to walk away with.
Yeah.
I think I can speak, I think Commissioner Blaney and Commissioner Rigness and I, we want to see this to an end, okay? And I, and we're engaged, okay? We would not have made these changes had we not been engaged, but we want it done the right way, we don't want it rushed through, and, so be patient, that vote's gonna happen, it's just, we're gonna make sure, we're gonna table set before we get to that, uh, point of serving dinner, so, okay?
I would, thank you, I appreciate it, I would encourage you guys to come when the meeting's gonna start again.
Well.
Because if you wouldn't, well, just hand your mouse, sir, please, just.
Alright, go ahead.
When I asked for a show of hands in the room, more than 90% of the room was in favor of it, very few opposed, I counted five persons, five people, so maybe that would have changed your mind, maybe you would have seen that, and I, you and I talked, sir, about why, why you might be a distraction at the meeting, and I understand that, but Julie Althoff came to the meeting and she wasn't a distraction, she got up, we acknowledged her, and a few people talked to her afterwards, but she didn't take over the meeting, but she got to see what was going on.
With Ju.
And I think it's important.
But, on all fairness, respect to Julie, Julie's not appointing to that board, and that's why she, she wouldn't be the distraction if one of us showed up.
Honestly, I don't know if anyone would know who you are, not a few people would know who you are, but I don't mean that, it's not offensive, but.
I, I can tell you about five minutes after that meeting started, they, they would all know who I was, because somebody'd make sure that they do.
Well, and maybe, but I, I mean, I think.
And, and here's the other thing, since you brought that up, okay? Let's, let's be, we had 60 people, roughly about 60 people show up at that meeting, okay?
The third one.
But we've got tens of thousands of people that were representing down there with that territory, so I'm not gonna get all, you know, you know, I've been at this too long, 60 people ain't gonna, you know, that doesn't, you know.
I took stats class, too, I know it.
Yeah, okay.
I know the numbers, I'm just saying, it was, it was representative of the group that put.
And, 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 and some, unfortunately, some individuals there took it upon themselves to, 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 to make threats and swear at people up on that board, and I've got that much patience for something like that.